City County School Board, can I have a board member certified closed session, please?
Madam Chair, certified to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discuss only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Hi.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Alright, and I will turn it over to Dr. Kiefer for superintendent's report.
Hey, Madam Chair, this evening, this afternoon, excuse me, like to mention a couple things. While it is Tuesday, I want to talk about Wellness Wednesdays. Please follow WJCC's school social media accounts this summer for Wellness Wednesday tips. Working in collaboration with SHIP, in this particular item, you'll take note of how much water our young people should consume and how to incorporate movement and play throughout the day. There will be much more of this to come this summer, so take a look on Wednesdays. Parenthetically, I will let you know that one of our very keen young people, students, in the Student Transition Survey for the Superintendent, when asked, what piece of advice would you give the Superintendent? Stay hydrated was that piece of advice. I will share more of the feedback from students as we go through the transition process. Additionally, I wanted to let the board and community know that WJCC school leaders continue to work on exploring how to leverage artificial intelligence in the work of our teams and how to positively support students and their use of AI. Amanda Bickerstaff, who's the co-founder and CEO of AI for Education, was with us back in June. There will be AI ambassadors representing each school, and we are working to build student AI literacy and considering next steps as we go through the course of this year. Additionally, I want to share and provide a shout out for the importance of reading over the course of the summer. We encourage you to visit our friends at either location of the Williamsburg Regional Library to sign up and participate in the summer reading program. It is not too late to get started with that. In addition to the formal program being offered in our libraries, don't forget to infuse literacy activities throughout the summer with your young people. Narrate your day and read content about you like signs, menus, and backs at the back of cereal boxes. Perhaps ask open-ended questions to encourage curiosity and expression of thoughts and ideas. And finally, we encourage you to find materials that are exciting and connect to your students' interest, books, graphic novels, and magazines. Last but certainly not least, I wanted to just touch base on the superintendent's transition process. Really appreciate the students, staff, and families who participated in the transition survey. We have gained, I have gained, a lot of valuable input to inform collective next steps as we strive to be one of the premier school divisions in Virginia. Please stay tuned for listening sessions that will incur in each of our schools and town hall meeting dates, which we held this fall and announced in the coming weeks as we dive deeper into common themes and opportunities. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer. And I don't think there are any reports from board members tonight, right? Nope, okay. Alright, we'll move on to some proposed agenda items for next time. Five point zero one, review authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent.
That's probably my agenda item, isn't it, Madam Chair?
Sounds like it might be.
Yes, I'm going to.
Unless you want someone else to, want to approve someone else's to do it in your absence.
I am recommending that we add Dr. Kathy Worley as the third backup signature in terms of the absence of the superintendent. Dr. Worley would join Mr. Walker and Ms. Ewing in that capacity.
Thank you. Five point zero two, review tuition rates for non-resident students for 2025-26 school year.
This is an annual review with the board, and Ms. Ewing is here to talk about the data associated.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval. The tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year 26 budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years. The recommended tuition rate for regular education is fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars, which is an increase of six hundred fifty-six dollars or four point eight percent over fiscal year 25. The special education tuition rate is recommended to be twenty-four thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, which is an increase of one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars or five point nine percent over fiscal year 25. This is the base special education tuition rate, as each individual's needs are different, and additional cost would be added to the base rate based on services received. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing, are there any questions on this? Okay. Move on to item five point zero three, review revisions to policy JN appendix student fee schedule for 2025-26 school year.
Madam Chair, this again is another annual item. School boards are asked to authorize certain student fees. Policy JN covers fees. The appendix that we're sharing with you this evening is a revised student fee schedule for school year 25-26. Dr. Worley is prepared to answer any questions you might have about that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kiefer. Each year, we update the board on Appendix A of Policy JN student fees, fines, and charges. This is not a policy change, it's an annual update of the fee schedule, which is Appendix A connected with the policy. For the 25-26 school year, we have one additional fee to bring before you. We've added technical drawing and design at the high school level. This is a career and technical education course that comes with a fifteen dollar fee. As a reminder, driver's ed fees are set by the Virginia Department of Education in September and will be communicated with students in class. As always, students are eligible for fee waivers. Courses with fees are noted in the program of studies. The online version of the program of studies has a direct link to the fee waiver form for students and families, and the link will also be made available on school websites, with hard copies available in school counseling offices and main offices at schools. Families will also know about the fee waiver opportunity through our family newsletter this fall and through their initial login with VIEW. Students and families will have to acknowledge the fee waiver form before making a direct connection with VIEW. Teachers will also remind students about fee waivers in their class and direct students to resources as appropriate. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Worley, any questions from board members?
So I have a.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Riffle and Mrs.
I'm sorry, thank you, Kim, I mean, Ms. Hunley. I look at athletics, is this per season? It looks like a change as well, is it?
Yes, we wanted to, we looked further down the document, and we had per, we had noted that before, so there's three seasons a year, and we just want to make sure that was clear. I should have noted that in my script, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and then I have another question, it's not something that's changed. Like parking for a year, like why are we not giving a discount to students, like to get more dollars in the door initially? Like, I know this is student fees, but this is a student, this is a budget, so as money comes in, it'd be better to have the money upfront, you know, getting ninety bucks instead of waiting for a hundred dollars throughout the whole year, right? Does that make, is it, is it a good question? Can I ask that question?
Yeah, so what, can you?
Yes, sure.
Ask the question when we're talking?
I guess like, why would, some, you know, I work in a place where I pay for parking annually. Like, if I pay for the year fee, I get a certain rate.
Because students don't drive the entire year. Some earn their license in the middle of the year, so we do it by semester. If they drive the whole year, we'll charge the whole year, but we, we prorate it in case they don't have a license at the beginning of the school year.
I understand that, I mean, that's why every year, but why is it like a cheaper price for the year if there's students who do drive? So you can start driving as a sophomore or even a junior, like you could get the year, you know, the money earlier in the budget than waiting all year for fifty bucks each semester. This is a student fees account, so I'm just thinking about like. It does say that, it's part of my semester.
Is, is what you're articulating that, that you ought to get a price break if you pay for the year at the beginning of the process? Is that what you're?
Yeah, it's like, what's the rationale of us not doing that?
I'm, I'm not sure, at least from my perspective, that we've ever looked at a tiered pricing model for paying everything upfront versus a certain amount over the course of the year. It's certainly something we could look at in future years, if, if that's something that the board would like us to.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Yes, I was always curious about the fees. So if a student, for example, the new course is coming up, a drawing, and it's fifteen dollars, if they already have the supplies, is that, or, so when the fees come out, does it say to parents, this is what the fifteen dollars is for? This kind of pencil, this kind of eraser, whatever, and if the students already have it, can they use that?
That's a good, good question. They, the, the fees typically cover like resources and consumables, things that we provide in labs and things like that, that are repetitive each year.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, we will move on to item five point zero four, review request to purchase nine school buses.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Snipes will talk to us a little bit about this agenda item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kiefer. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports elevate twenty-eight key priority safety and security and organizational efficiency and effectiveness. The item being brought for, for your consideration is a review of requests to purchase nine school buses from Sunny Merriman in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Buses that are older than the state recommended fifteen years in age are scheduled for replacement under the school division's bus replacement plan. Funding in the amount of one million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was included in the FY twenty-six CIP. The purchase will, again, will permit the replacement of four seventy-seven passenger buses and five fifty-three passenger buses under state contract number E one nine four dash nine zero seven four two, for an amount of one million four hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request of the nine school buses to Sunny Merriman Incorporated and be prepared to vote at the August fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes, Mr. Hoseng.
Are any of these nine buses, are they all mechanically still sound, that we can use them if we didn't replace them?
Uh, yes, they are. We, but we replaced them at the one hundred and fifty years, based on the record, fifteen years, one hundred and fifty thousand miles based on the state recommendation.
Correct, I, I guess I'm just looking at it from fiscal responsibility issue, especially since we've had issues with both of our funding partners this past year. If we don't approve this, is, I mean, just trying, in an effort to save money, those buses are still going to be operational, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the buses at this point that we couldn't use them for next year.
You are absolutely correct, yes, sir.
I, I think it's also fair to mention that a couple, maybe three years ago, bus replacement went into the CIP versus the operating budget. So this is, these are CIP funds that are being asked to be designated for the replacement of buses, and understanding that because it is in the CIP, it wouldn't necessarily give us the opportunity to use that operationally, fund-wise. So I just, I wanted to make that distinction for you. That since it's in the CIP, it needs to be within, used within the capital improvement program. Does that make sense? I can't, we couldn't, we couldn't pull it out and use it in operating, that, that one point nine.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm, I'm just asking, in, in an effort, if we, if our funding partners come back to us and, and for whatever reason, want us to try and save money, this could be an area where we could save money, because this is not something that is needed. These buses haven't broken down where they, we definitely have to replace them. There, there's been no mechanical issues that I'm assuming with the, with the buses. So, in an effort to save money long-term, the only reason we're replacing these is because they're fifteen years old.
That's correct, and that they meet the mileage of one hundred and fifty thousand miles.
It still needs to stay within the CIP window, so it would need to be utilized potentially for other CIP projects, I guess is the best, the better way for me to put it.
Can you tell us what happens to the nine buses that are being replaced?
Those nine buses will, will go into surplus. If we are, I mean, some of those that are on the further end, they will be, could be put on the WJCC and the county website for, for sale.
So these nine will move into the, like, sit there for parts or?
Correct, for spares, or, or to use as additional buses when buses are in for service.
And then, that means another nine or so from, that are sitting on the lot now for that purpose will be sold.
That's correct.
And do you have a, a sense of how much we might recoup by selling? What is typical?
Do you have an idea?
I think it's typically between two and five thousand, just depends on, for bus, yes.
Mr. Riffle?
I have one question about how we get to the point of an RFP for buses. Like, do we put out we want diesel buses? Or like, did they just say like, oh, we can fit this price point for nine buses in this way? I'm just like, kind of understand, like, at one point, we bought electric buses, and we don't want to buy them now for some reason. Because I think there are programs at the state where like, you can like have batteries that sit in the buses that can be used to like recoup costs for energy. I'm just trying to think of how we best can use our dollars moving forward. And they still have a purchase, especially if buses at some point will be sitting and used for parts or something like that. Batteries are meant to be plugged in and be put back into the grid, so. I mean, there's a point where like, we have to choose the clean economy act, so the thing that we're going to do is the school division. I know that's not right now, which is like twenty fifty, but like, at some point, we start picking, like, we can make money off of some of our investments, like buses and things, or the, the battery in those buses at high point times when the energy grid needs energy. We can put that battery fuel stuff back into the system. So I was like, I know we have the capability that here in our state now. I know that's something that school division will be looking to do in the future, which means those buses will go up in price. So as we look at these, I just want to know, kind of like, what's the process? Like, do we ask for diesel, diesel buses? Or do we put out an RFP that says like, we want four electric buses plus five diesel, you know, that kind of thing?
Couple, couple pieces, I think, to that question, I'll let Marcellus answer some of the other parts. We, we have, I think philosophically, we would like to be able to utilize more e-buses. I think the challenge for us in that is the, the charging scenarios that are currently available in those type of buses and our, our routing structure. And the, the way our routing works and the need for charges and recharges to be able to, to fill a full day. And so we have not found to this point that utilization of e-buses is a good return in our, return on investment, even with rebates and credits that may be available. So typically, our transportation team to include our, our, our primary mechanic feels like we need to continue to utilize the diesel bus scenario. And based on state purchasing agreements, we get, I think, a really strong price for those buses. So we, we are, we have not gone out for an RFP on buses since I've been here because of the strong state purchasing agreement. Did I miss anything, Marcellus?
You did not miss anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to also clarify for the public why we choose a diesel bus versus an electric bus. It's something that's often told to us as school members if we go to these conventions, like, you can pick one. I'm like, really, we don't, unless our state tells us we have a better option, so. It will, at some point, we will probably have to buy electric buses per state law, but right now, we're allowed to buy diesel buses, so, so thank you.
Can you just speak briefly to the question that I think maybe some in the public have, know, knowing that the challenges we've had with bus drivers? How it is that we are purchasing more buses when we say we don't have enough drivers?
The, the purchase of the buses replaces buses that are currently in use. So the drivers that are using buses need those buses to transport students. Once those buses reach fifteen years or one hundred and fifty thousand miles, it is deemed more pertinent to change them out because of their current replacement value or because of maintenance. And so we replace them so that, to ensure that our drivers have up-to-date buses to transport students.
And I think we're still working to right-size the fleet. I, I think that one of the scenarios that we are consistently asking ourselves is, do we have the appropriate number of spares to utilize when buses break down so that we don't have to double up runs? If we've got the people to drive, we want them to have a bus day in and day out. And one of the pieces that we continue to think about is, what's the right size of the fleet? Also, taking into consideration that we want to continue to add drivers. So we, we need to make sure that we have enough, a large enough fleet, that if we are able to continue to add drivers, thereby also reducing our reliance on contracted transportation, we are positioned. So we, there's a, there's a number in there, that's the number that we're continually searching for. And off the top of my head, I, I don't want to say it out loud, but I, I feel like we want to be in the, close to where we are now as we continue to transition old buses out of the fleet, bring new buses in, but still maintain some level of service opportunity at the operations center.
Right, and this takes, it takes about a year, right, from purchase? So it's not like, oh, we hired five new drivers, let's go run, run down the street and buy five buses, because?
You're absolutely correct.
We'll probably see these buses at the end of next year, if we're lucky?
Yeah, may, maybe.
Right, so we're, we're probably twelve months out.
Um, I would also like to add that, that getting our students to school on time is a major indicator of how many drivers that we need. And so we would love to be there ten minutes before the bell rings, that is the standard. And so that pushes us to determine how many drivers we need. It's, we're not getting them there on time, we need more drivers to be able to get our students there on time. And so usually, Dr. Kiefer said about spares, usually fifteen percent of your fleet are spares. So just keep that in mind, so.
This, these nine would constant, that would put us at fifteen percent, well, if we?
Oh, we're, we're currently have fifteen percent in spares under our current fleet. We currently have a fleet of approximately one fifty, one hundred and fifty buses. And during our last transponder study, to determine how many buses we'd actually need, it was about one twenty, one twenty-five. And so we can always reduce those number of buses, but you would be reducing those on the back. It'll be those buses that are twenty-five, thirty years older that we're getting rid of anyway. So, and those buses are used for spares and parts.
Mr. Hoseng.
So out of the one hundred and fifty buses that we do have, how many of those are, my terminology, operational? And how many of those are the, I think you said fifteen?
Fifteen percent of the buses are, are, are spares, so you would say one hundred and thirty-five would be operational.
Okay, and so, so the one hundred and fifty is the total number that we have, okay.
Any other questions? Questions?
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we will move on to our short list of action items. A pleasure.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, can I have a motion to, uh, six, item six point zero one, approval of personnel actions? Can I have a motion to approve those, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item six point zero two, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on June seventeenth twenty-five, can I have a motion?
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on six seventeen twenty-five as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Epstein.
Mrs., um, sorry, Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Six point zero three, approval of minutes from our special call meeting on June thirtieth twenty-five, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the special call meeting on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng, is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Stain.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Stain.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And finally, item six point zero four, approval of motion to amend previously adopted work session minutes from June third, uh, twenty-five. I believe there was a typo, yes, we had, we had, um.
That term again.
Yes. Dr. Kiefer was, was accidentally referred to as acting superintendent on those minutes when that was his first meeting as the full superintendent. So those minutes, even though previously approved, are being amended to take out the word acting. So that's what we're doing here. Uh, could I have a motion, please?
Chair, I move to approve the amendment of the previously adopted three, six, twenty-five work session minutes and strike acting from Dr. Kiefer's title in agenda item one point zero two.
Yes, it was six, three, just for the record.
Oh, sorry, six, three.
Yes, okay. Um, is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Alright, cruising through, um, we're at board member comments already, so. All right. Cruising through. Um, we're at board member comments already, so, uh, let's see. Ms. Chen, would you like to go first? Do you have any comments?
Uh, I actually do not have comments tonight.
All right. That works. Dr. Cavassos?
Uh, I'm close behind her. Um, but I, I will say, I'm gonna try and move junior ROTC closer to the division. We made some contacts a couple of weeks ago, and I'm hoping that that will bear fruit.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Riffle?
Um, I hope he was having a good summer. Um, hopefully summer school's going great. I talked to some kids at the bus stop yesterday in my neighborhood, and they said they're having fun. But I was like, I hope you're learning. I am. So, then I did a jump in jacks, and I went to work. Have a good summer.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hoseng?
I'm gonna piggyback off what Dr. Cavassos just mentioned and just say that, Dr. Kiefer, I believe that you either have or will be having a meeting possibly with an Army representative soon for our JR ROTC, so I'm hoping that comes to fruition, um, and, and we get some definite, good work out of it. If not, I can't remember if I've sent you something or if I sent Ms. Water information regarding Navy contact that I have that is possibly interested in assisting us with the JR, JR ROTC for our schools. And I'm just hoping that with Dr. Cavassos mentioning that we can get this off the ground, it's kind of embarrassing for our school district to be the, I think, one of the only ones in this area without JR, JR ROTC program, especially when we're so close to all these military bases in our area. So hopefully, we can get that moving this year.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mrs. Hunley?
Okay, also on JR ROTC, I've been waiting forever since I was a teacher, and so that would be awesome. Second, kids, yes, I've seen lots of kids in camps. If you go to the Whisk or anything, they're all there. I know there's some in summer school. I know we have teachers that are teaching summer school or taking classes or just resting and, you know, rejuvenating before school starts, which would be soon. Also, I'm excited about the water thing. I don't know when they will start sport prac, sports practicing for the season, but please, let's not be the, the division that's in there for a child falling out from heat exhaustion and not being hydrated. So let's just continue with the water thing, because this has been a very hot summer. And, uh, Dr. Kiefer, I was excited when you said you wanted to be one of the premier school divisions in Virginia, and, and I'm gonna strike of and put thee, premier school division of Virginia. So looking forward to the rest of the, um, report that you're gonna give us on how those talks were going. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Mrs. Donner?
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. And I will keep it brief. Just hope everyone is having a wonderful summer. Stay safe, enjoy the, the heat and the, all the summer activities. Um, yeah, we just want everyone to come back happy and healthy and ready to go in, in September. So that's all I got for tonight. Um, our upcoming events, we have the Fifth Annual WJCC Coaches Night, which will take place on July twenty-second at five PM at Lafayette High School, and a VSBA Conference on Education, uh, taking place on July twenty-fifth twenty-five, all day long at Hilton, the Hilton in Richmond, oh, sorry, Hilton Richmond Hotel and Spa Short Pump. And for upcoming meetings, we have, um, our next work session, which will start with closed session on August fifth at four PM here in room three hundred of the annex, followed by work session and action items, just like tonight. Um, also August fifth, four thirty PM here in room three hundred of the annex. And then for our regular meeting, we have something a little bit different. Um, we, on August nineteenth, which will be our regular meeting, we will start with closed session at six PM here in room three hundred of the annex. And our regular meeting will take place beginning at six thirty PM at Berkeley Middle School Auditorium, not James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. So that is, um, an exciting change. It's been something we've, it's been coming for a while. We've, we've known that, that was gonna be a change coming. Um, and that will be a place where we can, the setup will be a lot less cumbersome for staff. And so that will be a welcome change. So that's, that's a big change. All right. And with that, our agenda items are set for our next regular meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.